Great, thank you. Hello, welcome to the Select Board meeting of October 30th. It is 5:00 PM. We are here for an ARPA forum and then that will be followed by our regular meeting. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Okay. Big group tonight. Thank you, everybody, for coming. The way we're going to do this is there's a list of the 27 applicants. We're just going to go through each one and ask if anybody's here to speak on that. John Margie is here. He's Chair of the ARPA Committee and I think you have other committee members here as well.
Henry Howley, Nadia Clancy, Daniel Larry.
Great. So if there are specific questions for the committee, they are here to answer those as well. And mostly, we're just here to hear your feedback on anything that you might be here to speak about. We will not be voting or making decisions during the forum. So just want to make that clear. So then the first project is us for the board's selectman electronic signage for Town Hall. Do you guys have anything to say about that?
No.
Charlie?
Just that I would, you know, we do have it put in here. We want to, you know, we do have the limitations on the current DPW one. And in the sense of basically, it's one announcement or one event per, that it can run. Signs like this allow you to run multiple events. My hope is that not, you know, as much as we can, not just the town departments and town government, but community groups and such will be able to use it. It's not going to be there for commercial use, but we want, you know, given, we want this to be an opportunity to get the word out about things happening in town that as many people as possible should know. Because we never know how people get information these days. They can get off the Internet. A lot of people don't pay attention to that or don't use that for that reason. We don't, the newspapers, obviously, for the most part, are foregone. We have things like Buzz Around, which are great, but not everybody subscribes to that. So this is another way of getting information out, both for the town itself, but also for the community groups.
Right.
And my hope is that if we're going to install further signs, like the one here at Town Hall, that as wide a range of activities are on those signs, that we not limit to one particular group.
Absolutely. I think there's nothing more frustrating than seeing somebody after an event has taken place and having them say, "Oh, I would have gone to that if I had known." So anything we can do to prevent that is valid. Yes, Kathy?
Kathy Wolf. I have two questions. The first one is how much ARPA funding is there? Because I'm not aware of how much we have available. And then the second one has to do with the sign. And the question is, has there been any evaluation of the amount of electricity that it would utilize? So that, in here, it said there would be no ongoing expenses. That is absolutely not true. There's going to be electric unless it runs off batteries.
Which is still electric.
Solar panel.
It's going to be replaced. Well, no, there's been no evaluation as how many kilowatts hour, per year, we'll use for those signs. But versus a number of other uses that we have, I mean, these are LED signs, so obviously, it'll be more efficient than if we were using an incandescent sign. But we can find out what the estimated, and then multiply it against what National Grid charges us. But versus our electricity budget for all the buildings, for the streetlights and such, it's going to be fairly minor. And then the other question you asked was, we have about 4.1 million total.
4.1 million?
Yeah, that we had back to start off with. We've used some of that money already for the ambulance, for engineering costs, for the sanitary sewer, and for police body cameras.
So what's left?
We're at 2.4.
3.4. It's actually after we, the Select Board has already also approved funding for social and emotional salaries at the school, the ambulance, the engineering, the body cams, and permitting software has already gone through the Select Board, so that brings us to about 2.6.
Thank you.
Yep.
So that's the balance.
I just have one other comment on the LED lighting and National Grid. I have a customer that has a sign and they installed LED lighting. And for whatever reason, National Grid hasn't recognized it to give us a discount on the pricing. On signage, they give you a flat rate. And it doesn't matter how efficient you are, you're going to pay that highest rate. So I just want whoever's in charge of all this stuff to be aware of that.
It will be, our signs would be attached to meters. We run either, there'd be separate meters for each of the signs, depending on location, or electric would be brought in from a nearby building and a sign to the meter in the building. And we pay a specific rate per kilowatt hour for that usage.
Okay. But what I'm trying to explain to you is that we got stuck with a higher kilowatt rate, even though we put in LED lighting. We took out the incandescent, and our whole purpose of spending all that money was to get a break. We never got one. I want you to be aware of that.
We've changed our lighting. We use less electricity because of that and we pay per kilowatt hour. National Grid does not know we changed those lights. All they know is...
You're using less kilowatts?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, number two is sidewalks on Union Street. Is anybody here to speak about that?
Could I just ask a question on that?
Sure.
Is that from Hobart Street down to Berlin, or is that all the way from Bedford Street down to Berlin? Because we have sidewalks going up to Hobart. I don't know if this includes fixing those.
I'm not entirely sure who proposed this project, but I believe the scope of it includes beginning at Bedford Street, running to Berlin. So connecting essentially the downtown, the entire distance to...
From Bedford Street? But we already have sidewalks down to Hobart. They're not in great shape, are they?
Correct. If you, in my personal opinion, that existing sidewalk needs to be done more than adding new sidewalk. So this proposal would encompass the entire section.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Number three, Kay's Trucking. Number four, Satcham Rock and Bennett Safety Improvement Plan. Number five for the Council on Aging, 60 by 40 Pavilion. Hi, Nancy.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you? Hi, Brian.
Hi.
Good.
So I may have proposed this as the Council on Aging Director, but I fully anticipated and hoped that this would be used by the entire community. As you are aware, during the pandemic, we were one of the first senior centers to be able to offer programming because we have...
Excuse me, folks. I'm trying, I can barely hear Nancy over the conversation in the back. My apologies.
Because we have our beautiful outdoor space and we were able to offer exercise classes in the driveway, mostly. Of course, we can't do that now because of the vehicle traffic. So it would be wonderful to have a pavilion onsite where we could offer outdoor classes, outdoor events. It would be almost, it would be another classroom space for us, basically. And of course, when not used by us, I'm sure it would be used heavily by the community.
Okay. Questions?
Would there be a rental fee for outside use?
It's really up to you folks.
Would there be a rental fee?
That would probably be determined like the pickleball and the basketball courts.
Why, there's a rental fee there?
There will be.
I think he's joking. I'm not certain.
I got a key.
Me too. The 625,000, I know we've had some conversation about that. We're not positive if that would be workable based on the size of the pavilion that was proposed. Something like this, I think we would have to do is take some of the proposed money of 625 and use it for engineering and architect to see what can actually be done with this type of money. And I think that's what we're going to have to do in the future.
Okay.
And I have a figure for that.
Okay.
Which is about 45,000.
How much?
Forty-five.
That covers both engineering and arch?
Yes.
Okay.
Would that bring us up to building specs and such?
Yes.
Okay, that's a great, okay, that's great to know. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. IT Department website backup system for towns and schools. Ryan? Hello.
The first thing I want to say is we recently amended the amount that we're asking for to 38,000. This was...
It's only allowed to go down.
I know. This was just because of the time period from the initial request to now. Of course, the costs have gone up. Models have changed and it's just the nature of the beast. But that price is as of today, so if it was approved, we wouldn't be asking for any more money in the future. So this project would look to...
Hey, the light bulb is on?
Speaking of LED lights.
This project would look to improve and expand it on the existing town and schools backup system. Our current system in place is only onsite backups that we replicate back and forth with the schools. So if we were to lose both buildings, we would lose all of our data. This backup system would also replicate out to another site. And if something happened, we would also allow it to spin off, spin up offsite as well. So if we lost both buildings, we could spin up out in the cloud. Any additional questions on it? It's a product called Datto. We've redesigned it a little bit since we submitted the project back in last year, I think, now at this point. Great product, great products, great reviews. I know a lot of vendors, other people I've talked to wish they had it when they've gone down. But yeah, so we're looking, we're really looking forward to getting this project, if this project's approved.
Okay. Questions?
Nope.
Great, thanks, Ryan. All right, budget software? Permitting software, we already did. Police Department Premium Pay.
Mark Harvey from 15 Point Metal Lane. Mike Gardner.
Mike.
It's a little hot, can I take this off?
It is a little hot here. And now you're in the hot seat.
I'd be careful with the people in front of you taking that vest off. So we're here today, we're pretty excited to get the invite for tonight. The prior meeting we had, we were told we were ineligible for funds, which was kind of shocking to us because when we did our research, we found out that several area departments have received funds for this, including Brockton, Halifax, Hanson, Whitman, just to name a few. The police department never stopped working during the pandemic. Many of us got sick during the pandemic. I know I was out for two weeks. We do the same job, no matter what's going on. If we have to go in a house, we're going in a house, pulling over cars, we're interacting with people right there. Same job through the whole pandemic. It was kind of disheartening to be told that we were ineligible for the funds. One of the reasons the ARPA funds were used was to compensate essential employees for the heightened risk due to COVID. We face that risk every day, like many of the departments here. We were one of the few departments that didn't receive any compensation whatsoever. DPW went to a two-day work week. School and staff in basic buildings worked at home. We showed up every day. Working conditions, it's never going to change for us. The next pandemic, if it's worse than this, we're on the front lines. We're facing it every day. Normally, we facing it. How old's your daughter? Eight months. He's going home every day with his eight-month-old daughter. I'm going home to my family, my grandchildren. It would be really nice to be considered for the funding that we're asking for.
Okay. Questions?
No.
I guess the question I would have would be, what, so it's not real evident what we're looking for, Premium Pay, just on top of what you got paid while you were working? I mean, what are we, what are we looking for? Individually, everybody gets the same amount, every police officer?
Correct. From my understanding, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we had nine?
Ten total.
Nine total patrolmen that were working during the pandemic. We had one patrolman who came in halfway through. So the nine patrolmen, it's, I'm going to turn it over to my finance guy.
So we're asking for a total of 47,500. 5,000 for the nine guys who were here the whole time, and 2,500 for the one person who came in halfway through.
All right, just to be added up evenly through the...
Correct.
How does that compare to the other towns?
It's a tad bit higher. Most are around 3,000.
Okay.
That's it. Yes. That's all I need to know.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Guys.
Let's see, where are we? Premium Pay. Recreation foul ball netting at Strong's Field.
Mr. Helenin actually came by the office today to ask about the netting at Strong's Field. And you had stated that there aren't going to be any votes taken today, so this question...
Well, it's on the form.
Right. So the question he has is, why wasn't this recommended?
By the ARPA.
By the ARPA Committee.
So that would be an ARPA Committee question. We can't speak for that. Do you have his contact information? Maybe you could, you could speak directly to Mr. Margie? Or do, maybe he's watching now. You could answer the question now in case he's watching.
I want to say, after a year and a half of meetings and all the discussions that we've had, it's hard to pin down any one of these projects. I mean, we'd be happy to have him come to our next meeting once we get a post to discuss it in more detail as we have the opportunity to focus in on that one or others that may be in the same area.
Okay. Thank you. John, did you want to say anything on that one?
I'm good.
Okay.
Just pass that on to Paul.
Yeah. Thank you, Rebecca. Okay, Church Street Shed Repairs. Now you're going to go. So your previous rising was an anticipatory.
Correct. So I, as you can see, the Recreation Committee has a lot of, Chairman of the Recreation Committee is Peter Furia. So over the last couple of years, we've been working with the local sports groups in town and looking to work more closely with them as a Recreation Committee. We went through a lot of their capital needs, things that would help benefit the players and the athletes and the families in town. One of the needs that was identified by baseball and we pushed it forward to the ARPA Committee was to fix the exterior of the concession stand and shed at the Little League Field at Church Street. That's what that represents. It's in disrepair. The boards are all rotted.
How long's that shed been up?
It's John Silver, so that would be...
Okay. All right, at least 20 years.
20 years, anyway.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And you want to talk about the lighting, too?
Yes. The lighting at the Little League and the softball field, that was another one of their needs. Electricity has become so expensive for them that they were even looking at not holding a fall baseball and softball season this year. So what we proposed to the ARPA Committee was replacing those lights with LED lighting.
Uh huh, okay.
We've heard that works.
Yep. We already did the renovation of the courts.
Great job, once again. Fantastic job, folks.
And we authorized the purchase of the outdoor movie system. We're very excited about that.
Scoreboard.
The scoreboard.
At Strong's Field.
At Strong's Field. Is that you guys, too?
Yes.
You are busy people.
So Strong's Field, as you know, is up the street. It's been around for forever. And the scoreboard has been around forever. It actually still works. Unbelievable that it still works, but we'd like to replace it.
It's iconic.
If it's not broken. If it's not broken.
It's like the Green Monster.
Not so sure. You can see the score during the day, but it still works.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anything else on here from you guys? No?
Probably.
Number 70. The youth sports building?
Yeah.
The feasibility study also for Leland.
Sorry, Charlie, what?
The feasibility study for the Leland Farms.
That's you guys? Leland Farms feasibility study is you to determine what, if anything, can be done?
Yeah. There was an earmark from the state for 25,000, 28,000 dollars that we received, the town received for the Rec Committee for this study. We went out, got three quotes, that money we received from the state wasn't going to cover it, so this would be in addition to the 25,000 that we received.
And that earmarks for FY '25?
The earmark, I think we received in 23...
But they let you hold it over? Because don't earmarks usually go away if you don't spend them?
If I was remembering right, Melanie, we got a note back to Representative Sullivan Amida to say if it could be included. Yeah, so we didn't spend all the money. It was due to be spent by June 30th, three months ago.
That's correct.
The representative asked whether we had any of the earmarks that we had not fully expended. So for instance, it was the same year we got the bicentennial money, which was fully expended. So the hope is that it will be included in the last supplemental bill for the fiscal '23 budget, as much as even though fiscal '23 is done, you're still doing a supplemental budget for that. And we'll just have to wait and see.
Okay.
What are you looking to try and put up in that area?
We don't know because we don't know what the use, usage allows for that area.
But like, are you thinking soccer fields?
Soccer field, lacrosse, you know, lacrosse doesn't really have a home.
Uh huh. And then you need parking.
Is the feasibility study to see what can be done?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's the whole idea, is what can be done?
Right. No, I understand that.
That's to get the field and the, but I would just look what sport you were planning on, if it's buildable up there.
Yeah. So again, to reiterate, I think we're trying to figure out what the town should be doing with that land versus what it's currently doing with that land. And there's been a lot of things that have been brought to the Recreation Commission's attention, but without an understanding of what can be done. We don't want to speculate on what we should be doing.
Sure. Money well spent.
Carol, I know, at least we have one audience person who's asked some questions.
About this?
Or maybe over all the recreation stuff, I don't know. Somebody was raising their hand.
I'm sorry, Kathy, I didn't see you.
Yeah, I do have some overall things. I don't mean to step on the Recreation Committee's toes on this, and this is something that comes up all the time. Have you guys checked with the Southeastern to see if any of your renovation projects are something that we pay for materials and they provide labor and it's a means of which the guys that are in the, you know, carpentry area can learn? I know there's a roof that you wanted to have for the concession. Maybe they need to learn roofing skills. That's one thing. And the second, and this is, this is a bit of a dig, about five years ago, there was a group of us that tried to push through something known as the Community Preservation Act. One of the key things on that is the opportunity to provide funding for recreation in the town. A lot of the issues, a lot of these projects that you have listened, listed, rather, would have been covered had we actually enacted that. At the time, it would have cost us as taxpayers about 40 bucks a year. And the funds would have been matched partially by the state. So it's something I would like to see us try to work on again.
Are you on the Community Preservation Act Committee?
We haven't got one.
We don't have it? We didn't, it failed?
We didn't pass it. It got shot down.
I have very young...
Well, yeah, go ahead and join.
Will you take my treasurer's position at historical?
If you take my school committee position, along with Chair of Rec, so I'll trade you.
Along with what?
Along with Chair of the Rec.
Oh, Chair of Rec. No, you don't want me on that one.
I don't believe I was on Rec when, I'm sorry, when Community Preservation Act...
That was around 2016.
Yeah, I do wish we had a little bit more of a focused approach on that, so that way we could share in some of the state funds that would be available.
Well, that's it. And our own funds that we would have been contributing because...
Real estate taxes.
Half of these projects would have been fantastic.
Kathy, I feel your pain on that, but it's water under the bridge at this point. Unless somebody wants to bring it up again, I'd hope to see it happen, but, you know. All right. And then also the roof replacement for the youth sports building and the purchase of land on Robin Street. Anything you want to...
The roofing replacement is a replacement at Belmont Street for the soccer building, replacement of the roof at the Church Street Little League Field, and the replacement of the roof at the new Church Street Basketball Court shed.
Okay.
The purchase of the land at the end of Robin Street was kind of a pipe dream. We had heard that the person may have been looking to sell that waterfront property. We thought it would have been a great idea for the town, a great thing for the town, kayaking, boating, fishing. It just kind of...
Yeah. Too bad, maybe someday. Town Beach.
Hmm.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Great, thank you.
John, do you want to stay for the...
Are you talking about the playground equipment, too?
Put your different hat on.
Switching hats, no longer representing Recreation, now representing the School Department, Mr. Shea, the inclusive playground equipment.
Peter, you can stay here.
That's true.
Representing the school committee.
You really could.
You know. Bring him back to your members. Bring him back to your members.
The inclusive playground equipment at the Central School, we have a playground at the Central School, but we also have created autistic spectrum disorder classrooms at Central School. We have children in wheelchairs with disabilities. There's really not a lot of equipment for them in that playground, so we were hoping to add some equipment and actually add a pathway for wheelchairs in that playground.
If, because now, of course, we have the Central School Building Committee moving forward. We don't know, you know, what will happen with that, if anything. But do you see this as equipment that then could be moved if we ended up with a new school or renovating the current school?
Well, I think that that may be one of the things we should require, that the equipment be...
I suspect if we build a new building or renovate, I suspect that's going to be mandatory.
Okay. Good. Any other questions?
No.
Great. The mental health and social emotional funding, we already did. High school baseball field backstop and netting.
Yeah, that's for the new, well, fairly new baseball field we have there. Teams don't want to play there. They lose too many baseballs. They have to start a game with two dozen baseballs. The balls go into the parking lot, they go next door into where the sheep are. We would like to move the backstop. The backstop right now is 60 feet behind home plate. We'd like to move it in 30 feet and extend the netting along the first base side.
John, which baseball field is this?
The one right outside your window.
Right here, okay.
No more foul balls.
Well, there'll still be foul balls, but there won't be as...
More balls than sheep.
Questions? No? The pickup truck?
That was, that was not recommended by...
Do you still want to pursue?
Want to say anything about it?
Well, we have an, we have an outside maintenance person that takes care of the fields.
Do you still want to pursue?
Want to say anything about it?
Well, we have an, we have an outside maintenance person that takes care of the fields. He travels from the school to Strong's Field and also travels to Church Street. He's got a small hatchbox car which he loads stuff in. And I just didn't think it was right that we are asking him to use his personal vehicle for school activity.
Okay. I think we saw that maybe more as a, capital, I shouldn't speak out of turn, but maybe as a capital expenditure rather than a expenditure. I think was thinking on that. The turf installation at the softball field.
Yeah, we have, right outside the window there, that we have a softball field. In the, in the spring, in a wet spring, we can barely use it. So, our softball team travels down to Church Street to play games. Can't use it because it's, it's, it's wet. It doesn't drain well. We originally had looked at possibly putting turf there, but in discussions with DPW, John Haynes, we thought that there may be an opportunity to fix the irrigation there. So, that a million dollars could be revised down to two hundred thousand.
Okay.
Which is the number that the board has in front of it.
Right, we have two hundred.
Yeah, that's what's on here is the two hundred. Mitchell and central security enhancement.
Yeah, so, as you know, reading the news lately, we're looking at ways to better improve security at our schools. Mitchell School especially has two entrances that are all glass. Anyone intending to do something that they should be doing can get in pretty easily through that, through that glass. This, the amount of money we recommended is to enhance the doors with steel, put some bullards, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right, bullards in front of the entrances so you can't, car, 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 car can't drive through. It also includes some, some work with the access control system at those buildings.
Snow blowers and salt spreaders?
I.
Doesn't snow here anymore, haven't you heard?
This is for two, they're called mammoth snow blowers. They have, they're stand-on snow blowers, they have a snow blower in the front and a salt spreader in the back. It really does the work of two, possibly three custodians who are spreading salt by sand. A couple of years ago, we had five slip and falls at our schools. Last year was a mild winter, we, I think we only had one, you know, one bad slip and fall because we can't keep up with salt. I feel is a big liability for the town. This would help us replace what's a manual process. Our custodians are great, they do a great job, but sometimes, you know, they can't keep up with the melting and the freezing and the melting and the freezing. So, this would help us improve the safety of the walkways at the schools.
Okay. And then you have signs for the Central and Mitchell School similar to what we've talked about for in front of Town Hall?
Charlie did a great job explaining.
You don't want to do it again? And if you had those there, would they be just school events or would you then include community events? Like we would.
I think we would include community events, yeah, as much as that policy allows.
Yeah.
Which is what?
I don't know.
I know that like the high school one had bicentennial events on it, you know, they'll do things like that, so. They were asked once, they did it. Questions?
No, I mean, my only drawback would be, would be the Central School project, right? Like making sure that some of this stuff wouldn't be potentially added into their projects, to that project if they could. You know, I'm sure there's certain things we can and cannot do, but as you said earlier, we just have to keep a kind of a watchful eye on what we're purchasing and that it can be easily moved or whatever the case may be. I mean, all, I mean, everything seems illegit to me.
David, thanks.
I'm good.
Okay, great. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You might want to go back to your audience just in case there's any last words.
All right, that is, that concludes the list of going through. Is there anyone who had anything to add or any questions that they wanted to ask about any of the projects? John, do you want to have anything you want to add?
Yeah, quick, 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 to thank the people on the committee. Those that I had tonight, Kenery Alley, Nadia Clancy, Daniel Werry, and Melanie Dean, Walt, Paula Wolf, Dave Walsh, Dan Picha, Gigi Hurley. I think I've hit them all. And, Charlie Seelig and Rebecca Johnson also.
This was a bear of a project that we, that we dumped on all of you and your hard work and time that you put into it is really appreciated. I, I don't know how you got to this point as quickly as you did because there was just so much to consider and so much to look at. So, we do really appreciate it. I know I.
David and Peter agree.
Yeah, and it's just beginning, John.
I think he was thanking them because he thinks he's done.
Yeah, I know. I think we indicated it could be a three-year project, we're halfway through. So, good luck in the second half. At least.
Great.
I agree with Carolyn. It's just a tremendous goal you people did. Incredible.
Quickly on the question earlier about the foul ball netting at Strong's Field. One of the paths of the committees, when we first started, was really thinking about what projects could have the largest community impact. So, a lot of these projects rated higher or lower on our scale based on how many members of the community that the project could impact. And I think that that might have been one where the number fell, you know, slightly lower in impact than other projects.
Sure, that makes sense. Thank you. All right. Anything?
No.
Oh, thank you everyone for being here.
Yeah, thank you all for that, I appreciate it. The board appreciates it. Do you guys want to talk about this further or do you want to move on?
Move on.
Move on. All right, and we will transition to our regular meeting. You can leave if you want or you can stay. Our meetings are so fun.
Why would they possibly want to leave?
Well, you know.
The best is yet to come.
Oh! Well. All right, thank you, everybody. Oh, yeah, well, we can go to other stuff. Rebecca, do you want to see if Chris is available since we're earlier than we thought we were going to be?
You probably, you probably need to wait till six. If someone, for instance, for some reason was paying attention to the agenda.
That's fine, we can do action items and come back to it.
Fire chief and the police chief are here too, if you wanted to them earlier.
I don't see the.
He's right there.
Oh, okay. Well, let's, is anybody here for open forum? No? Okay, I will close open forum.
Well, you can do the action items, yeah.
All right, we'll do our action items and then we'll see. Read slowly.
Read slow.
Too bad we didn't have that nice long bond note for you to read again. Which now we found out you don't have to read.
You don't have to do that ever again.
Thank you anyhow, Peter.
Now we know, you didn't have to read it.
No one was listening to you anyhow.
Actually, we all knew that before he had.
Got together and talked about it.
All right, let's do our action items and then we'll go to our appointments.
Okay. We start with approve the minutes of the October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three Select Board's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve but not release the minutes of the October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three Select Board's Executive Session Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion and possible vote on the library director contract.
Do we have?
She's on her way.
Okay, we'll come, we'll come back to that. That's fine, we, who would have thought we'd get here this early, right?
All right, moving along, we'll hold that. Arrives. Discussion and vote on contract between the Town of East Bridgewater and Greenwood Industries, Inc. for the RTU and roof replacement at the East Bridgewater Public Library.
This is the project where we needed the additional funding at Town Meeting because the bids had come in high. However, now that we've gotten that additional funding from Town Meeting, Town through the board can sign the contract with the low bidder on the project. Brian and John did wonderful work in putting all this together, working with the engineers. And obviously, when we talked at Town Meeting, we want to save that building. And the only way you're going to save that building, well, there are other things we have to do in the future, but if we don't save the roof and put in proper HVAC, at least for much of the building, you don't have a building. It's been, the contract's been vetted by Town Council. Yes, Rebecca, we sent it over to Town Council?
I didn't send it over to Town Council. I think you just talked to Caitlin and she.
Okay. And so, I certainly recommend the board approving it and signing it tonight.
Okay.
Yes, I'll form it in a motion, motion to have the contract between the Town of East Bridgewater and Greenwood Industries, Inc. for the RTU and roof replacement at the East Bridgewater Public Library.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just that, nothing's going to happen tomorrow or next week. The equipment has to be ordered to take, there's a certain lag.
Spring, right?
Right, we're talking the spring of twenty-four for the work, March, April, May.
This, this price is built in for?
Yes. It's firm prices, no change. Unless we do a change order for some reason, that's the price.
Right, okay. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to appoint Kathleen Kavanaugh to the Conservation Commission as a regular member effective October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Accept the resignation of Robert Stewart.
Surtivant.
Stewart, from the Arts Council effective October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? Well, thank you, Mr. Surtivant, for the time that you served on the Arts Council, we appreciate that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve the request from Lauren Travis Harne and Nadia Clancy of the Community Coalition for change for the use of the Town Common for the Fourth Annual Celebration of Multiculturalism, an event with food vendors, music speakers and performers supporting diversity. That will be held on June ninth, twenty twenty-four from one PM to six PM.
Second.
Any discussion?
Hope they have better weather than this year.
Well, I see they've moved it up a few weeks, which I'm pleased to see.
And I think one of the things that changed was because we had the bicentennial
Right.
events earlier in June and they moved it later in June. So, I think that this has been more closer to the original date.
Yeah, I think that's right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve the request from Delphina Rogers of the American Legion Post ninety-one for the use of the Town Common for a ceremony to dispose of torn and unusable US flags on Friday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-four from six PM, nine PM. Rain date will be June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve the request from the Professional Bartending Services for a one-day liquor license for the center at St. Jim Rock for a memorial gathering on November fourth, twenty twenty-three from eleven AM to two PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approve the request from Fire Chief Timothy Heron for the quarterly ambulance billing abatements through September twenty twenty-three in the amount of eighteen thousand, six hundred and three dollars and twenty-one cents.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve to probate the fee for the South Shore Cinnamas LLC, East Bridgewater Cinnamas Wine and Malt Liquor, eighty-three dollars for the remaining two months in the twenty twenty-three year.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discuss and vote on side letter, side letter of agreement between the Town of East Bridgewater and East Bridgewater Firefighters Union Local Two Seven Six Eight. No, don't. Passing over discussion and vote.
Okay.
The union hasn't had a chance to, to vote on that.
They'll meet again.
Discuss again, right? All right, moving on from there, discussion regarding stop sign located on Tardy Terrace and Tower Hill.
Second.
Well, we, a number of us probably have information about it.
Okay.
If John's paying attention.
Chief? John, I saw emails, but I don't know.
I mean, we don't have any accidents at that location. I had a couple officers sit up there in the past, including today. We had one stop today and it happened to be a resident. It was the only one. I've had cars up there checking it out. It's, there's not as much traffic as they claim with the trucks and everything. I mean, I really, speed bumps were definitely not an option, that would cause more problems than they were. But we really don't have a problem with that intersection. I know the neighbor sees cars go through it all the time, but it's, it's the middle of a residential neighborhood. Like I said, every time I put a car up there, there's really no offenders. When they do have an offender, it's a resident.
I was up there to swat for about forty-five minutes, sitting there waiting, and one car came through and that was it. That was a resident that came towards. So, it's just, speed bumps, I would gather, would be a huge liability. Putting it on a, because that Tower Hill, I mean, that Tardy is a main, you know, a lot of houses out there, but I don't know what we can do, especially where we're getting that there have been no recorded accidents up there.
I had an officer up there for twenty to thirty minutes today and you had literally one offender, it was a resident.
The only things I would recommend, I mean, the vegetation is at all restricted in view of the stop sign, that's one thing. The other, I know there's an older, I don't know how old the photograph was, but the photograph, not from the residents, it was from Google Earth, was showing a stop line there. I don't know if it's been repainted recently or whatever, just as another visible.
It's an annual process, you just, you go.
There's no blockage of vegetation up there.
MBTC client, stop sign that's in place. Echo with the chief's concern, it is a residential neighborhood. I think the majority of the traffic that moves through there are residents. I don't think, that's, that's not a cut through, in a sense, it's not anywhere there's going to be a cut through. So, I really think that what the town can do, the town has done. And I would, again, I think the issues that would be created by installing speed bumps or any sort of permanent speed control in the roadway would expose the town to equal issues.
And to put me in power up there for twenty to thirty minutes when there's a lot of areas in town that I try to keep up with the speed enforcement besides the stop sign that, like I said, we had one offender today in time I had officer there.
Apparently Dave has the time to sit up there, right?
Yeah.
Can't we just give him a badge and a pad so he can just write citations?
I already did.
You'd love it.
Then I won't have to check in here.
All right, well, thank you for that, and I think we'll just.
Notify the residents.
Notify them and, you know, continue to monitor it on a, you know, off and on basis when.
When I have officers up there, I mean, and my guys are great like that.
You're aware of it.
I have a list of areas that I'd like them to check, that they daily, they, they focus on specific areas and I have that area in there.
Okay.
And we really don't have many offenses. And like I said, we don't have any documented accidents at Tower Hill and Tardy Terrace.
Okay. All right, thanks, chief.
Review and vote on ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan?
Right, so, we got in a grant from the state under the Community Compact Program for fifty thousand dollars. The Collins Center has done this type of work before. What the plan in this case would cover would be all the town buildings and grounds excluding the three schools, not the grounds, because the grounds are used by the public, we would include those. But outside, except for the auditorium, the gym and the sort of lobby area in the junior, senior high school, we would exclude the schools because it's sort of a whole different world in dealing with school policies and structures and facilities and such. What it would produce is a list of actions that we could take to improve accessibility for those people with disabilities, whether it's in terms of the facilities, but it's also in programs and services. It doesn't set us up as, to be liable, in a sense, we're liable right now if we're not doing that. What it does do though is give us an action plan that we can work through in the next few years to make those improvements. And having this helps protect us to say, we're being proactive. We went out there, we looked, we saw what deficiencies we might have, and we're taking actions to correct them. The actual contract's going to be for forty-two thousand, five hundred rather than fifty. If there's any, if we find out we need to do additional work as part of the plan, we'll have that extra money available from the state. We don't need to go out to bid because Collins Center is one of the state, part of the state university, so we don't have to go do a procurement action with them. Quite comfortable working with them on this project, and so I'm recommending the board approve. Quite comfortable working with them on this project, and so I'm recommending the board approve.
Okay.
Make a motion?
Go ahead.
Make a motion, do we approve the ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan through?
With UMass Collins Center.
UMass Collins Center.
Great. Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to vote on EDA Grant Admission Agreement with O-CPC, planning council in the town of East Bridgewater.
Obviously, you know, as you, well, know, OCPC was instrumental in helping us get that $3 million grant from the Economic Development Administration. And they do do grant administration work, so, you know, on a variety of different grants. So for instance, not, they do some actual work, work in terms of, for instance, they were doing the master plan with us, but they also do grant administration work. And my understanding is that Don Sullivan's done grant administration work on EDA programs before. The, and again, since there are a state agent, or, I don't know what it, during the state bailiff, in the sense, OCPC is a public agency, it's not a private institution, so we would not have to go out to bid. However, I'd like to get some conversations done before the board approves this, both with the EDA. We have something scheduled for Thursday of all interested parties, to get a better understanding of what the grant requirements and such are, who does what. Well, the, first, the grant requirements, but I also think conversations need to happen with, between ourselves, the DPW included, with OCPC and Weston Sampson, because the description in the proposal intersects with some of what I think Weston Sampson would normally be doing as part of their administration work, as we go through the bidding, construction, et cetera, process. And I want to make sure who's going to be doing what. And so if we're paying $65,000 for this work, we know exactly what we'll be getting. One of the other challenges is that, you know, for instance, it says that the, you know, we'll obviously pay upon invoice, but there's no, I don't have any sense that, okay, is this going to be, for instance, $3,000 a month for 20 months? Is it going to be, there's going to be a bulge at some point? And how would we calculate how much that invoice would be for a certain month or a certain quarter, whatever? I'm certainly not opposed to working with OCPC on this, because we need somebody doing grant administration. And I don't, and what I really want to avoid, obviously, is that besides just doing it right, if we do it right, it gives us a better chance to apply for, and be successful in applying for applications in the future. They'll see, okay, East Bridgewater got a $3 million grant two or three years ago, it went well, they did every, they checked off all the boxes, they did the grant administration correctly, hey, let's get them another one, because we like people who actually do it well. And I think, you know, having a grant administration work is going to be vital to do that. I just want to make sure who's, you know, who's, we know that, who's going to be doing what, when, between all the parties, DPW, OCPC, and Weston Sampson. So my recommendation is to hold over this until the 13th. We'll have had those meetings, I hope, we'll have one with EDA maybe before the 13th, one with OCPC and Weston Sampson and DPW, and work all that out and be able to come back to the board.
Okay. Do you want to withdraw your motion?
Yeah, withdraw.
I don't know if John has any.
I would, I would echo Charlie's comments. I think we do need to actually, in our scope of services, identify what construction administration, bidding responsibilities, Weston Sampson, or engineering services, because those are, a lot of the things do overlap, and they would typically, in my experience, be all handled by your engineering firm, who will have sort of contract administration versus this EDA component of, of particular grant administration. I don't know how, we, we exact, we do, we need to figure out what, what those roles will be and how they'll be determined, and how they'll be managed, because we don't want to be paying twice for the same services. All have conflicts as we try to make this project move.
I think Charlie did a, a good job too, already giving that point to not just OCPC, but Weston Sampson, the email you sent them the other day. They know exactly what we're coming from as well.
And this would be a two-year agreement for $65,000?
Yeah, I think it would bring, I think it's, I think it's more like 20 months, but two years, yeah, in the sense of, I think it brings us to late 2025, is it?
Soon, 2025.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, I've got one additional, right, this poll?
And then we'll go back to...
Yes, we do have, there's one here, we do have an email with, to town council, just to confirm that this is an accepted part of the road.
All right. So if you vote, it can make it continue.
Yeah.
All right, so, approve for the town to notify national for to turn on the streetlight, home number six, located at North Ridge Drive, to take over the payment for the streetlight.
Pending town council.
Pending town council.
Second.
Okay.
Should they just?
Made and seconded, any discussion?
Just for a moment, I noticed that in their initial request, it was that poll five and six have been turned off. Do we want to consider poll five as well?
There was a recommendation not to turn on poll five?
Yeah, it's a risk. Poll five would not benefit anything.
Yeah.
Put into the report.
Just that it was obviously approved as part of the subdivision plan, so why would we have polls that, it'll eventually come to someone's attention when poll six gets turned off. Someone else is going to wonder why poll five isn't on. I understand poll six is at the intersection and obviously hasn't...
Says it's 500 from the area, and it would be...
Yeah, and it's not a safety issue. Poll six would be a safety issue.
Came from Deputy Chief McLaughlin.
Don't entirely disagree, except that poll five was designed into the subdivision plan. And I know that...
Yeah, we can, we can deal with it later if that, if it becomes an issue.
Just so that it could be done later without having to go through this action again.
Oh, well, we, we like action items, you know. That's why we're here.
We're here for it.
All right, any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then let's just go back to number three.
Three, discussion and vote on library director contract.
I see our library director is here with our trustees, if you want to come up to the, what do we need to...
And really, Rebecca, Jessica should not be the one advocating for her own contract.
True. Your chair.
Yeah. And I know, I know she's here, and I even know that she could speak eloquently about it, but she shouldn't be defending her own contract.
Hi. Hi.
Do you want to come up with Leah? Sure. Sure. Leah Herman, Chair of the Library Committee. Jessica has been with us for just over a year now, so we signed her initially to a one-year contract. She's been lovely. We would like to extend it to a traditional three-year contract, which we've done in the past with directors. So we have worked with Charlie and town council to draft a three-year contract and are here with trustee signatures, ready for you all to complete the signature process.
Great.
And it's actually going to be a little bit less than three, so it would bring up her up to June of 2026.
Yes, together, so we hired her in October, and we want to put her on fiscal.
Right.
Great, okay.
Because one of the, one of the problems we run into with these mid-year contracts is, do we actually have sufficient money in the budget for any change in the contract? This way, it's tied into the fiscal year. If the board wants a recommendation from me, absolutely.
Yep. Questions?
No, Jessica has done a fantastic job with, since she came on board a year ago. And, yeah, this is a great movement, and I appreciate the trustees moving along.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it's been a...
We're getting you a new roof, too.
All kinds of...
I, I am thinking of him for all the work that he's done on my building and the roof.
Yeah, he's the roof guy.
And you have all your necessary Mass Board of Library Commissioner references in here for your protection, right? Yes. Good.
Yeah, I can form that in a...
Yes, please.
Okay, I will, let me go back to the, yeah, make a motion to enter a contract with our library director, Jessica Henderson, for a three-year contract.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Congratulations. We're glad you're sticking around.
Well, it's good, no, I mean, you know, you go through, as certain other offices know, you go through and through people, and it just like, okay.
Actually, it's a nine-year contract.
Congratulations.
Thank you. You just don't know it yet.
Who has originals on this, Rebecca, do you?
If you could just send us a copy with the, of that after they sign?
Okay.
I have it, but not with the trustee's signatures.
But you have the originals, so if...
Yeah.
We can just sign that.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does it matter that it has us with the wrong chair, vice chair, all that?
Cross it out and may it make the corrections.
Well, I have, I have, I mean, that's the one you printed out.
Because when you were originally hired, that was our makeup.
They revolved their...
We switched it every year, yeah.
I just must have printed an older copy.
Yeah.
Apologies.
No problem. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to cause a problem with it legally or something.
These are the same three people, so...
Yes, that's true. Be bad, this is a horrible thing.
Freaking joke.
I got that pen from the West Bridgewater Public Library, it's the worst pen ever. I'll tell Melanie, put that on record.
But she continues to use it.
Well, it's the only one I have with me at the moment. Rebecca knows, do I ever have a pen? Five years on this board, never have a pen.
We'll order some.
And plenty of other things.
So that concludes...
That's it, thank you very much.
I think, yeah, right? Yeah, that concludes my action items.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Chris.
He's here.
Chris is here. So now we will bring up our Veterans Agent, Chris Buckley, to talk about Veterans Day, parade, and activities. It's going to be a non- raining Saturday. You heard it here first.
When you can, if you can send this electronically to me, so instead of me scanning it again, put it up on the website and such.
All right. So I'm going to start off first with our banners that will go up tomorrow.
That's awesome.
I want to thank the Patriotic Committee, DPW, PD, everybody, a lot of the residents have very, been very involved in this, and will continue to be as we, as we go through the program, as we order more banners and that sort of thing. So the resident feedback has been very positive, and I'm looking forward to continuing this project annually. That's what they'll look like. And then...
How, I mean, they'll, they look great, how long do they last?
So they last five to six years. That's one of the things we're going to be seeing over this next year. And really, the debate's going to be, do we leave them up all year? And when they need to be replaced, how do we replace them? So a lot of that's still in the works, but like I said, we have a lot of good feedback and hope to come to, hope to come to an agreement when we put up, like a, just a general agreement with everybody who's going to put a banner up, how things will work when we put the second round up in the springtime.
What's the schedule look like for putting up the banners? And is there sort of an opening day or opening night or whatever?
Um, so that's, thank you, Charlie, that leads into my, my next point. In the morning at 10:00 a.m., DPW will be starting on Spring Street, just south of the Dance Studio, and will be coming through the center. The batch that we have will get us through the center, up to the common, and then we're going to go down Plymouth Street to the high school, and then down to the middle school on Central Street. And then as we branch out, we will put some on 18, but we're not going to put a lot on 18, because the ones on 18 do get beat up more than they do. And if we're all being honest, who wants to go through the five-way intersection if they don't have to? Most people go through our east and west routes anyway. And this way, it's, you know, it's a town thing, we want to show off our veterans in the town, so, so that's, and as we grow, we'll, we'll branch further, but, but that's the main route for right now.
If someone sees these and says, hey, I'm interested, what do they do?
They contact my office, starting January until March 1st. We're going to run it a little bit differently, but that's the open, pretty much the open enrollment for this, to get it on for April of the springtime.
Tie that into Memorial Day?
Yes. And then that'll just be an annual thing going forward. This, this bunch we have going up, and the ones that will be going up in the springtime, will probably be our two biggest projects. After that, it'll probably be more of five to 10, as opposed to a lot more than that.
How many do you have going up?
So far, we have, on, on this order, we've got 23 going up tomorrow, we have 46 altogether with this, this first push.
Exciting.
Probably close to, just from what we've heard, probably close to 25, 30 in the springtime, so.
That's awesome. This is something I talked to you about, I think, your first week here, so it's nice to see this come into fruition.
Definitely.
Thanks for all your work.
We're looking forward, oh, thank you.
Get it to his point.
We're looking forward to it, because like I said, it's going to be along the parade route, so we'll have a very, very patriotic and, you know, East Bridgewater-centric parade route, which I think is fitting for the, for the 200.
Perfect timing.
And how far, how, what's the range and the people we're on? Are we going all the way back to World War II? Do we go up until...
Um, World War II, all the way up, all the way up to present day. And we've got every, every service represented, and, and really, I would say, anybody who is thinking of doing this, moving forward, especially with the layout we have, a colored picture is, is by far, a lot of those colored pictures really do pop. I mean, the black and whites are good, I mean, you can only do what, you know, if grandpa only has a black and white picture, that's all you can go with. But the, the scanning capability was even a lot better than, than I thought it was going to be when we originally started the program, so.
Excellent.
Just a question on the, on the parade itself, Chris. We have another flyer going up, putting down Bob McCarthy...
Yes.
... dedication, which would be at, at the end of the parade.
Yes, there, there was one just put out today. This one was just to get, just to get us talking about it, if there's any questions. We do, we were able to get a static display from a Middleborough National Guard company that will be stationed on the common. One of the things I've seen the last four years that I've done this, not in East Bridgewater, but in the other towns, is everybody gets to where they're going to have the ceremony, and then trying to keep everybody there while you run the ceremony is a little issue. So one of the things we're going to do is we're going to put that sadic display out there, that'll kind of get the, everybody will get to the end of the parade route, the ooh, ah, what's this? By the time everybody's figuring out what it is, then we can start our ceremony. This way, we can keep as many people in and around the common as possible, you know, for our ceremony, so.
What's the parade route?
It's going to start at the old, the old Shaw's Warehouse, Adria's Way, I believe that's how you say it, that leaks up with Spring Street. We'll step off Spring Street, staging at 9:00, step off at 10:00, we'll get to the common by 11:00. Judging by who's emcee in the ceremony, we won't be there past 11:30, I promise.
I have a lot to say.
We know that.[1654.77]
Well, just to let you know, everybody else other than you, I put a three-minute minimum, so you have plenty of time. Everybody else has kept to three minutes, though.
And of course, Peter owes me, since he didn't do it last year when he was supposed to, but I wasn't letting you have this one.
That's right.
And then other events that we do have going on, we've got the breakfast at the Y this Saturday, along with the Field of Flags. So anybody who's going to be at the Field of Flags or is planning to be at the Y, we've set it up to where the Field of Flags is at 10.
On Saturday.
On Saturday, and on the 4th, and then we'll wrap it up and we'll head over to the Y for breakfast at 11:00. Approximately 11:00 to 1:00 on that is what we're looking at. And this way, we're, we're, we're trying to pull in as many veterans as we can. There's a lot of things that the Y offers and there's a lot of things that, that my office offers, so getting with the Y so they can make their pitch to everybody along with the different benefits I have will really work out well.
Great collaboration, that's, that's good.
And we've got good lineups from the other two communities?
Yes. I spoke with West Bridgewater and Bridgewater today. As some of you may know, Bridgewater's VSO has been out for some time, but I've spoken with two or three people in town that are in connection with a lot of their veterans and we're looking to get a lot of people to the Y from both Bridgewater and West Bridgewater as well.
And we are going to have a bus for the veterans.
Yes.
For the parade. And we'll get, we have a school bus there, we'll put them on the bus and at the front of the parade and they'll lead us there.
And then other things we'll be doing, we'll be doing a clothing drive that'll be going to the, the VA. And our main goal here is every time we, we say we're doing a clothing drive, everybody just brings us all the stuff they don't want, which unfortunately doesn't benefit our veterans as much as we thought it would. So we put a list of five things together that I've talked to the VA, this is stuff they do need. And then the Monday, Tuesday after Veterans Day, so it'll run for two weeks and then I'll drop everything off at the VA at that time. And then we've also got with the local food pantries, and again, got the specific list of, you know, do you actually need cans of soup and rice or do you need, they need more box meals and, and, you know, things that can be prepared over a hot stove? And we will get those out to them the week after Veterans Day as well.
Great. Excellent.
Anything else?
Any questions?
No, it's pretty, pretty explanatory, I appreciate that.
Good job.
This is the first time that the Y has gone into this, doing something for the veterans and, which, hoping this is a huge turnout because the Y, as Chris said, they offer a lot more than a fitness center and a pool and stuff like that. They have all kinds of social stuff and, you know, the people that need help, they have everything you can think of and we're just hoping this will kick off some conversation and if it works, then we'll, we'll start doing something monthly, but this will be an annual breakfast.
Love it. Awesome.
I do have one more thing to add. The census data says we have 743 veterans in town. I have contacted over 850. We do have a, a little bit, obviously, in the four years that has passed away, but we are north of the census numbers. And as far as my list, I've, I've either talked to them in person, sent them a letter or a survey and, and received, received feedback, so. Over the, over the whole time I've been here, we've, we've talked to everybody, just trying to get the ones that maybe the census missed or that had moved into town since then.
Okay.
So.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. See you Saturday at the Field of Flags.
Definitely.
Where again, it will not rain. All right. Chief Jenkins, Chief Haren, you are the next contestant.
Come on down.
At the select board meeting.
Hello, hello.
Not sure what you're going to win, but.
Attention, maybe.
Hello.
Hello.
Tell us why you're here.
Did you invite them?
I didn't invite them.
So we are here to.
Charlie invited them.
Thanks, Charlie.
You're very welcome.
I mean, I think they might have invited themselves, actually.
I mean, you're here.
No, and these two.
God just show up.
We were just wandering the halls.
I did not, I did not invite myself.
Something to do.
Uh, we are here to present on the formation of a public safety building committee to examine the police and fire departments' facilities, current and future staffing levels, spaces for vehicles, equipment and storage, and the programs and services provided by each department and develop a list of options to meet the needs for facility, for facilities for both departments in the future. Both departments are desperately in need of additional space, not only for manpower, but for storage of vehicles and equipment. The fire department lacks individual locker rooms and bathroom showers for each gender. Both departments will require upgrades for ADA compliance. Our thoughts were for the committee, will be made up of one representative from each of the following: Planning Board, Finance Committee, Capital Committee, Police Department, Fire Department, and two members at large. The fire and police chiefs will also serve in the committee, but likely in a non-voting capacity, to offer guidance and assistance with individual department needs. There may be a need to add two members, one from facilities and another member at large. The maximum number of voting members we are looking for is nine. We are currently looking for two members at large to serve. The last date to apply is November 9th at noon and it would be helpful for those members at large to have a background in building, planning, or construction project management. Chief Jenkins.
Just to go over that, I mean, obviously, just some of the project benefits, I just wanted to highlight some of the project benefits. To modernize police and fire services in one complex, realize an operational efficiencies and cost savings, operationally optimal location for public safety building, provide a much-needed modern expanded space to accommodate fire station services, equipment, staff, including separate facilities for male and female firefighters, provide a much-needed modern expanded space to accommodate police services, equipment and staff, and also free up much-needed space in the town hall where the police department is currently in the town hall at the bottom. So it would give the opportunity to free up some space for the town hall usage in addition to town hall parking spaces, which is a rare commodity, looking for parking spaces. Also provides long-term ability for a town to serve growing population and upgrade aging municipal infrastructure to avoid unnecessary unplanned emergency expenditures and to preserve our credit rating. So obviously, looking at our facilities, I mean, we, we, once we get up and running with this committee, we would love to have an open house or bring anybody through our, you know, departments so they can visually see, you know, our, our facilities that we're currently overcrowded in, and just to go forward with that. And then, once we have the committee set up, obviously, we'd like to meet at least, you know, every other week going forward to, to get this up and going. If, I know I've gotten some emails, people asking what type of commitment, until we have the committee on board, but I think we'd be looking at at least probably, you know, twice a month to get going and going from there. Depending on. Like Opera probably for about three years. More than likely.
Potentially.
Yeah, potentially. And obviously, this is just, we know this is going to take some time, but we, you know, looking forward into the future, we know this is something that's needed within the community.
You have to start somewhere.
Exactly, so this.
And you have to start sometime.
We, we don't anticipate this happening right away, but this is just to get the ball rolling so we can look forward. It's a good beginning. Yeah.
Well, the, the good thing is, as well, I, I received funding from Town Meeting last year for about $50,000 for a feasibility study for the fire department, which I'm not going to use now. We're just going to kind of hold that aside and if this committee tends to, or seems to move quicker than anticipated, that money would be available, you know, to add, or to offset whatever cost might be required to, to do a feasibility study for each building. And so we're kind of starting ahead of the game a little bit.
Good.
And looking at neighborhood communities, they're going to the root of a public safety building where they incorporate our police and fire services. It's, it's more cost-efficient, et cetera, cost-saving.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, we talked about it numerous times, both chiefs, it's, it's going to, it's not when it's going to happen, but, you know, it needs to happen, that's basically what we're looking at here, you know? Whatever I can do, whatever I'm sure whatever support I can do, we're more than happy to help out.
So we've been talking about this probably for 10 years.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
At least. And, and now it's, it's a great beginning, get it advertised, get the people out there and just, just make sure they understand what they're in for. You know, it is a commitment, but it is something that is so much needed, you know? I don't want to go to your jail, you know, it's just, it's disgusting.
Well, if you saw the locker rooms, I mean, that.
I've been in the locker rooms, too.
Yeah.
Really?
They're awful, yeah. But they took me on a tour just in case I had any doubts about how bad it was.
Oh, okay, yeah. That's your story and you stick to it.
And I named three of the rats on the way back.
The rats were the ones complaining.
Yes, right.
Well, it's great to see you two collaborating on this, I think that shows a good, shows strength to the town. You know, it's important.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Thanks, we got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Keep those applications coming in.
Yeah, we have some already, correct?
No, this is for a grant.
Oh, for the grant.
All right. Rebecca, announcements, reports? Would you please tell us about your stunning victory today?
Oh, we won the pumpkin decorating contest at town hall today. Thank you for everyone that came in to vote for us.
That's not me, I wasn't here.
You didn't even know about it.
They probably didn't want me with a knife, anyway.
It makes us look good.
A lot of people came in and said, what is that? At least we feel better that, yeah, people voted for it.
It was great, I mean, the work that people put into it.
It was like a fun team-building day.
You guys did great, but all of them were fantastic.
Yeah.
Really a good job.
That's our second annual, so, next year we'll.
Bigger and better.
We have a dynasty.
So that was at 5:00? Did you have something? We can go back to it if it was.
Okay, sorry. I could have used it earlier, but I was here on behalf of case trucking, I didn't know.
Oh, okay, yeah, sure, if you want it, you can sit if you want and just tell us.
This was part of the public forums, so people who were associated with the grant applications or anybody else who had questions about it were welcoming, you still are, to speak to the board about your grant application.
Okay, awesome. I have it on my, this is my printer today, it didn't want to work.
Printers are like that.
I know, right, the day you need it.
Especially when you need the most.
So I'm here on behalf of case trucking, I'm a co-owner and we were seeking financial assistance based on the impact of COVID-19 to our business. So the trucking industry was hit pretty badly during COVID, there was a lack of business. So we were forced to kind of take unprofitable business. At the time, we were taking work that, you know, was driving to New York or New Jersey for about $800 when it really cost us about $1,200 in gas. So it really forced us to be put in a position where we were taking, like I said, unprofitable business, but in order to grow business, sorry, grow relationships with our brokers and get contracts for the future, you know, we were taking that work anyways. And so now we were kind of put in a place where we have an increased amount of debt. And so we were looking for the financial assistance in order to get our business back on its feet, right? So with the amount we requested, which I believe was about $47,000, we planned to get a new truck, which would, you know, help us obviously make more money to be able to pay the debt off. We were looking to pay some of the debt and then also, you know, get support with daily business operations, so hiring a bookkeeper, which, you know, is super important for all the things that you guys requested from us. I'm like, oh my God, QuickBooks isn't doing it anymore, so. Yeah, we're looking for the support, really, just to get our feet on the ground. We started our business in East Bridgewater, we live in East Bridgewater, you know, we started our family here, so it's been really great to just continue working here. We hope to be able to get the support of the community as well. We do bring in loads from, you know, different states to back into Home Depot, Lowe's, Amazon. So most of our deliveries are back into our community directly, which has kind of been important for us, right? We try to, to bring back goods locally and to the areas. So I think I pretty much covered everything that I wanted to on the fly, but didn't want to take up too much of your time, I know I was late, so I apologize for that.
That's okay, any questions?
Did you, did, did you appear in front of the Opera Committee?
Yes.
In what, so you have subcontract, basically?
So we have one driver now.
Okay.
And one truck that we own. And basically, we hire brokers to find work for us and then we do those deliveries. So we don't subcontract, no.
Okay. Was there, did you get any federal or state assistance at all during the pandemic?
No, we didn't, because we started in December of 2021 is when we transferred over to our own, basically working for our own, right? We had driver before, but we were under our own authority now in December of 2021, right? So now we're no longer using someone else's DOT number, we're using our own DOT number. So, no, we never got any federal, nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Peter?
I was going to ask this.
Yeah, I was too, so, okay. Well, thank you very much for coming in. Yeah. Um, we weren't making decisions tonight, it was just to get the feedback from the people who had applied, so.
Okay, awesome.
I'm glad that you spoke up. No problem.
Glad you came in.
Have a good night. Yeah, thank you. Okay. So Rebecca, you're all set, no announcements? Town administrator? Nothing.
Where is it, go ahead.
Who are you and what have you done with Charlie Sealeek? Board discussions? David?
I'm good.
Peter?
I'll just thank the rec again for Saturday's display down they had. They've got, they got an Ann Allison, Selma Mita, who gave them a nice citation, this is the work they did and it was, looked really good. Dave Casey brought his perfectly flavored truck down, too, so it was a fun day and the weather was fine.
The weather was perfect.
Yeah, it was a beautiful day for her.
Beautiful, so, yeah, no, it was a great job by those, by everybody in there.
You know, accolades to everyone involved in that entire project from, you know, Allison on down to, you know, you.
Absolutely.
The work you did, Peter, the recreation.
I've heard great things from people in the community already.
They're using it.
I was down there and I didn't break anything.
Oh, I'm very glad to hear that.
Yeah, me too.
No, some more work to be done, for sure, in that area, but.
It's all right, we're good.
Where they were to where they are now, it's, it's nice to see.
It's great, it's great to see.
Awesome. Is that it for you? I just want to thank the Key Club. We went, I took my grandson with my family to the trunk or treat in the high school parking lot last week and to the party in the high school cafeteria and it was a lot of fun. It was loud.